Good evening and welcome to the Smyrna Town Council Workshop. To set our agenda for our December meeting, I'm going to ask Raquel if you will do prayer, and Ms. Diane, will you do our pledge for us tonight? Everyone will stand, please.
Amen. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for allowing us all to be here tonight. We ask that you will give us wisdom and discernment in going about the business of the town. We thank you for the town employees, for our citizens. We ask that you will bless each one of them. We ask that you will help us to make decisions that are pleasing in your sight. In the mighty name of your Son Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Raquel and Ms. Diane. We will move into our items for discussion. And Brian, I think you have an announcement you'd like to make.
Yes, Mayor and Council, thank you for giving me this privilege. It's my honor tonight to share with the council in our community. Over the last several months, I've been working on a process to evaluate some positions for the town, something that we've talked about several times, and that's the assignment of a couple of gentlemen to our Assistant Town Manager level. We have a press release that will be going out simultaneously, but it's my pleasure tonight to announce Rex Gaither and Todd Spearman, who are both here with some families, I think. So that's good to see. To Assistant Town Manager of Smyrna, they both will go into these roles on January the 1st of 2020. Assistant Town Manager positions were created to serve as a capacity to support for the Town Manager, a result of growth. Our goal is to ensure that both the citizens and the town of Smyrna personnel continue to receive the service and support they deserve. Rex and Todd are both long-term valued employees and will seamlessly transition to these elevated positions. Their support will allow me to steward and cultivate relationships locally across the county as well as at state level as your Town Manager. Rex joined the Town of Smyrna in 1990 as a Purchasing Director, was promoted to Finance Director in 2010, and has served in that position in the past nine years. As Finance Director, Rex leads budget preparation, capital improvement plans, financial projections, manages cash and investment portfolios, and all purchasing activities for the town. Rex will continue to have oversight of the Finance Department in addition to his role as Assistant Town Manager. He's formerly from Nashville. He's a proud graduate of Middle Tennessee State University. He calls Smyrna his home for him and his family, and he is honored to be appointed to this new position. Talk about Todd just a moment. Todd joined the Town of Smyrna in 1987 as an Auxiliary Police Officer, moving to a full-time position in January of '88. He worked his way through the ranks in the department, serving as Lieutenant of Patrol, Lieutenant of Detectives, and has served as Captain of Administration since 2008. Todd was instrumental in creating the Youth Academy, a Fire Department and Police Department Safety Camp, and has consistently served over 70 children each year for the past 21 years. While serving with the Smyrna Police Department, Todd continued to further his education. He holds an Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice from Middle Tennessee State University, a Bachelor's of Arts Degree in Management and Human Relations from Trevecca, and a J.D. Juris Doctorate from the Nashville School of Law. He is licensed to practice law in the state of Tennessee, and he and his wife Beverly are proud to call Smyrna home as well. And I think she's with him. And then also Rex has his family, Leslie and his wife, and they are proud parents of Hillary, and Brad Warren, and Ryan Gaither, and grandparents to Clay, Drew, Seth, and Lana. So at this time, two gentlemen would please stand with your families. I'd like to show a little recognition and appreciation. We have a 31-year employee and a 29-year employee that are stepping up, taking on new roles. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Brian. I just want to say congratulations to both of you. Very much well-deserved. It is nice to see ones that have been here in Smyrna for so long, and we all have the utmost respect for both of you and are really looking forward to working with you more now. And to your families, we are so glad that they are part of our team and that you all are part of our team because it is definitely a team effort here in the Town of Smyrna. So, Council, anything from you?
Congratulations.
I'll add that I've known both these gentlemen and their families probably since we were all snotty-nosed kids, and Rex, not you, but him.
So Todd's a snotty-nosed kid, and Rex is not.
Well, and all I'm going to say is, I'm not going to share any stories about either one of them because they've probably got a few on me, too. But I'm really proud of both of them, and I know that these are two candidates that will do an absolute excellent job to represent our town and be supportive of Brian and his role. And so I'm just proud of both of you and your families, and we appreciate what you're going to do for our town.
Anything else?
Just thank you for both of you and your families being willing to serve in this capacity. Congratulations to you both.
Great. Okay. We will move on to our items for discussion. Either, do either of you two have anything that you'd like to say?
No.
No? Rex?
Pardon?
Anything you'd like to add? Anything you'd like to say?
Yes.
Okay. Kevin, can you hand him the mic? Thank you.
I would like to thank my wife for her love and support that she's shown to me down through the years. I'd like to thank Brian and the Mayor and Council for the confidence that you've placed in me to fulfill this role. I'm excited about how this is going to improve the Town of Smyrna. I'll work hard.
I agree. I think it is something that is definitely needed. We talked to Brian about it early on and wanted to let him get his feet wet in the position and see, and I think it is only going to benefit the employees as well as our citizens, so.
And I think Todd probably has something he wants to say.
He will now.
Yeah, you would say something about your wife, right? Yeah, I'd like to thank my wife for being here. I'm like Rex, I echo. I'm very humble, very honored in this. And obviously, 31 years, I love this town. And I always tell people, why are you there? I love what I do, love where I do it, and I love the people that I work with, and just want to continue serving the town.
Great. Thank you, too. We will move on into our workshop agenda. Our first item is consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for properties located on Tax Map 54, Parcel 15.15. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this first three items are all regarding the same piece of property. This is the plan of services for a piece of property that has been requested to be annexed by Mr. Sean Collins. It's owned by David and Gail Mohasky. It's about 19.76 acres. This is the plan of services that sits in writing. The town would be providing all services to this area upon annexation, except for water, as it is served by the Salda Utility District. The Planning Commission did review this and did recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? Item two goes along with this. It's the consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation of R3 zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, Parcel 15.15, containing approximately 19.76 acres. It's requested by Sean Collins on behalf of David P. and Gail Mohasky. And the property is located at 8964 Rocky Fork Amble Road, and this is a second reading. Anything to add on that, Kevin?
Anything to add? There's nothing has changed since the first reading.
Council, any questions on this? Item three is our housekeeping item, which is consideration of a resolution and memorandum of ordinance 19-61 relative to the annexation of R3 zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, Parcel 15.15. We'll put that on our agenda. Item four is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 34, Parcel 23.00, containing approximately four tenths of an acre. It's requested by Porofino Alfaro for it to go from I3 to I1. The property is located on Wade-Herod Road, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a, again, nothing has changed since first reading. This is a small track plan on Wade-Herod Road that has been requested to be rezoned to I1 primarily for building setback reasons. I3 does have very, has the most restrictive building setbacks in our zoning ordinance, and this would allow for this property to be a more developable piece of property. It is adjacent to the track that was rezoned by the council at your last meeting for the exact same request there. The Planning Commission again did review this and did recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? Then we'll move on to item five, which is consideration of ordinance relative to the rezoning of properties located on Tax Map 49, Parcels 2.00 and 2.02, containing approximately 3.03 acres. It is requested by Abu Ishak to go from R1 to PRD. The properties are located on Old Nashville Highway, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a request for a PRD. The proposal is for 35-unit townhouse development. It would be Phase 2 of the Villas of Stewartspur, which is Phase 1, has 38 units, so it would be a total of 73 if approved. Access would be from Longfellow Lane, which is a private road. It's a part of Phase 1. It did include the patent book and everything that was submitted with this PRD request. The Planning Commission did recommend approval with the condition that they do show management of this by a third party for the HOA as part of this. They are pursuing an HOA, we're not a management by a third party. Again, nothing has really changed on this since you looked at it at first reading.
Questions for Kevin on this? Okay, we will move on to item six, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 27P, Group B, Parcel 18.01, containing approximately 42 one-hundredths of an acre. It's requested by Ann Gannon to go from R2 with an H1 to C4 with an H1. The property is located at 102 Hazelwood Drive, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a rezoning request. This property is in the historic overlay and would remain so. The base zoning is requested to be rezoned from R2 to C4. Again, nothing has changed since first reading. The Planning Commission did review this and did recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin? Seeing none, we'll go on to item seven, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of properties located on Tax Map 28M, Group G, Parcels 23.00 and 24.00, containing approximately 49 one-hundredths of an acre and 56 one-hundredths of an acre respectively. It's requested by Maggie Johnson and Frank Richardson to go from R2 to C4. The properties are located on Enon Springs Road West, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, these properties are on Enon Springs Road West, just east of the Old Nashville Highway intersection, about 400 feet or so. The surrounding zoning is a mix of R2 and C4. This is, again, nothing has changed since first reading, and this is, has been recommended approval by the Planning Commission.
Questions for Kevin on this one? Okay, we'll move on to item eight, which is consideration. Oh. Do you have a question?
No.
No, sorry, okay. Eight is consideration of an ordinance relative to adding language to the Town of Smyrna Municipal Code Title 15 Motor Vehicles Traffic and Parking, specifically adding a new Chapter 8 pertaining to dockless small vehicle systems, and this is a second reading. Jeff?
Over here.
Sorry.
Mayor and Council, if you say this is a second reading, this would be a prohibition of the small dockless vehicles. Other communities have experienced some negative effects, including safety hazards, so this would prohibit those within the Town of Smyrna.
Questions for Jeff on this? Okay, we'll move on to item nine, which is consideration of a resolution to update the Town of Smyrna's social media policy.
Yes, Mayor and Council, and we had been looking to update the social media policy for some time, and obviously with Kathy Farrell coming in, her and I met and came up with some revisions. As you know, social media is always changing, and we try to keep our policies up to date and dealing with the issues that may arise. And what you have before you is our recommendation of a policy for the town that's kind of more expansive than the last one that we had.
Questions for Jeff on this? Kind of made it sound like there was going to be an issue with Kathy at first, I thought, with her social media.
No.
No?
She has a good hold of everything.
Good, good. Okay, we'll move on to item 10, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding for the use of the town event center relative to a mass medical emergency by TriStar Stonecrest.
Yes, Mayor, I'll take this one. I was approached by TriStar about, in the event of emergency and a mass issue, be it a natural disaster, disaster, or any kind of issue, that they were looking for a place for a secondary operation. This really is limited to their administrative purposes, not necessarily the medical purposes. So we, after talking with Jeff, we did bring this agreement together with their attorneys to offer it to the town for consideration. Now, I will point out that this is a secondary position that they would hold because we have an existing MOU with the Red Cross. So depending on what happens and what the needs are, and how much space each of them would use, there's a possibility we could have both of them in the building at one time, or one or the other in the building. But Red Cross would still continue to have the first position. They would be a second position with us. And we feel like it's a benefit for the community to make sure that services are still being rendered in the event of an emergency or a disaster of some sort. So we would recommend that we approve this and move forward.
Questions for Brian on this?
Just one question, doesn't have anything to do with this. Do we have a backup in the event that we have an issue here?
Yes, we have that.
Okay.
Yeah, through police and fire and those type things, we have our backup plan.
Other questions? Okay, we'll move on to item 11, which is consideration of a resolution authorizing the formal adoption of the ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you may know, a couple of years ago, T.Dot sent us a letter, along with any other municipality that has 50 or more employees in it, stating that we were required to prepare an ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan, evaluate our existing facilities and services that we provide to the community, and come up with a plan, develop a plan, to be able to take those and make sure that they either meet ADA compliance or plan on when we will meet them in the future. What we're doing here is putting a resolution together, formally adopting the transition plan, showing that this is what we're going to be following moving forward from here on as far as meeting ADA compliance with development.
Questions for Tom on this?
So there are several places within the plan that do not have the information in as of yet, like dates and timelines. Does that get put in as we go forward?
That should have been updated, and I'll make sure you get the most current copy of that. I'm sorry.
There's some highlighted Xs along inside the actual plan.
Page one of this one.
Okay. Other comments or questions on that? We'll move on to item 12, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with energy land and infrastructure relative to the Old Jefferson Pike Drainage Design Project.
Yes. Back when Army Corps built Percy Priest, they came through and acquired certain pieces of property for putting an easement on to be able to flood. There is a section on each side of Old Jefferson Pike that has an easement on it, and that easement's been given to us as far as being able to maintain positive flow from one side of Old Jefferson Pike to the other. There's a section, unfortunately, that was never put in to connect these two easements. They're offsetting, and there's no easement between the two to connect them. I've met with Army Corps, what we need to do to be able to go in onto their property legally, and rebuild this ditch, put this ditch in to create positive drainage, is prepare a set of construction plans and an easement description for them to approve and give us an easement so we can go in and put this ditch system in to create positive drainage from one side of Old Jefferson to the other. This is a proposal from the engineering company to do that.
Questions for Tom on this?
Where's it located?
It is just east of the intersection of Catherine Grace and Old Jefferson Pike.
Just down behind him.
Yeah, yeah.
This project has nothing to do with your Town Manager, though. I have no money. Just a disclaimer. I'm like Mark, I'm not voting on them.
Just a quinkie, Dave.
You're a displaced child.
That's right.
Okay, other questions? Then we'll move on to item 13, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute Change Order Number One with boatman construction relative to the Taylor Farms Sewer Upgrade Project.
Yes, ma'am. So within the project where the line's being upgraded for Taylor Farms, the contractor has found four connections that we are not sure where they go. We didn't have them on any maps that we own or the GIS system, so within the project, they're going to camera the lines and find out where they go. If they're not connected anything, we'll cap those off. If all four of them were to be capped off, it would be $2,000. If we have to reconnect and retype for the new line, then it would be $10,000. So this could range between $2,000 and $10,000, depending on what we find there.
Questions for Michael on this? Okay, we'll move on to item 14, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal agreement with Parker Hanafin relative to the maintenance for the THM analyzer at the water treatment plant.
Yes, ma'am. This is the third year of this maintenance agreement. The THM analyzer is required by the state, and it monitors disinfection byproducts.
Questions on disinfection byproducts? Anyone? Okay, then we'll move on to item 15. Approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement with Laverne relative to placing gas AMI-connected grid routers on two poles plus installation of the additional pole. Mike?
Yes. With the new gas AMI project, we will have these connected grid routers that go throughout the town and into Laverne to be able to communicate with the modules on the meters. So there's two poles in Laverne, and we will be installing a pole at one of their water tank sites. There's 22 of these grid routers total. 19 of those would be on town-owned assets already. So this is the agreement. It has been sent to Laverne. This is subject to change a little bit, but if it does, I will be getting that to you before the council meeting. But Nathan worked on this with Jeff's office, so we feel good about the agreement.
Questions for Michael on this? We'll move on to item 15, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute, and oh, wait, I just did that one.
16.
Yeah, sorry, 16. Were y'all just going to let me get all the way through it? Okay, 16. Appointment of one member of the Arts Commission to serve an unexpired term ending in 2021. Raquel, anything you want to add on this?
We've just had another resignation, and so we need to appoint someone else to the position.
Great. So if someone is interested in serving on the Arts Commission, we encourage you to go on our Town of Smyrna website and apply for the Arts Commission, and we will be appointing that member at our next meeting in December, and it will serve through 2021. Item 17, approval of the adoption of the Revised Employee Handbook. Jeff?
Sure. Mayor and Council, I submitted a copy of the Revised Handbook for your review. I won't necessarily go over every single adjustment that was made in it. Most of it was minor adjustments. We did work with outside counsel to review the handbook and look at any new laws or regulations that needed to be updated, so we've made those changes. The last time we adopted the handbook was 2014, so it's a good time to do that again. Glad to answer any questions that you may have about anything that you saw in there.
Questions for Jeff on any of this?
Nothing earth-shattering that the employees would be questioning or tore up about us soon.
Nothing earth-shattering, no.
Okay, then we will move on to item 18, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Cigna relative to the third-party administrator, provider network, and reinsurance stop-loss for the town's health insurance plan. Jeff?
Sure. Mayor and Council, it's our time of the year to renew our health insurance for our employee health plan. We are recommended to renew with Cigna. Again, they are keeping their fixed costs or administrative fees are the same from when we rebid it several years ago. However, we've had a couple of years of poor catastrophic things that have happened to our employees, and our stop-loss insurance is going to be going up this year. So you'll see a significant increase on that going up this year over previous years. So that's the main change this year, is due to some major illnesses and injuries that we've had, that stop-loss insurance is going up a little bit this next year. So that's the main change with the Cigna insurance for 2020.
Questions for Jeff on this? Okay, seeing none, we will go to item 19, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with blank relative to the Zama Park construction. Mike?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. We opened bids on November the 22nd with two submitting proposals. The apparent little bid is a company called Greenway of Nashville for $510,330. Staff and Reagan Smith are now reviewing the bids, which are fairly simple bids, some of the language we typically use in our contracts. The project includes sidewalks, plazas, ornamentals, and associated amenities, so that would be benches, but a lot of them are, you know, Middle Eastern-type plants and that type of thing because of the Zama Park. There is a trellis and a shelter also in the project, and we're going to buy that through Sourcewell and have that installed ourselves. That way, we know that we get what we want instead of having to get a substitute structure there. It is a 150-day project. We're trying to get that done by midsummer, and I have been kind of looking on their website and talked to Greenway of Nashville today just to see the type work and see how their excitement was about the project. Again, we're reviewing this. Reagan Smith was engineer record. I want to make sure that they're good with everything on the bid as in ourselves, same way. But we're excited about this and hope to bring you a recommendation for the Town Council meeting on December 10th.
Questions for Mike? Brian, we kind of haven't talked about this. Do you want to talk about the email at all?
Yes. You want, you want to make it covered, feel free.
I don't mind if, I didn't want to steal your thunder.
Go ahead.
So we received a letter two days ago from
Two days ago.
Mayor Endo's office, and Mayor Endo is actually going to be going through the elections in September?
August.
In August? Is it August? And so he is really in a time crunch, but he can be here for one day, and he is wanting to fly in on August the 1st to be here for the opening of Zama Park. So the students will be here as well as Mayor Endo, and then we have some other people that we're hoping to invite, but I'm really excited that Mayor Endo will be here. I was thinking about it the other day, and, you know, 31 years ago, when we cut the ribbon on that park, will be when Mayor Endo first came to the Town of Smyrna as a businessman to visit. So it's, I think, exactly what we wanted that program to do, to intertwine lives and to learn about each other's culture, and I think that's exactly what our Sister City program has done. So I'm really excited that Mayor Endo is going to be able to join us. Anything you want to add to that?
Ma'am, I think you covered it. We're excited about this. It's going to be a fun event. We'll be working up towards the event, working with staff. Mike, you just heard our deadline, so.
Luckily, there's no pressure on this one. Appreciate that.
Well, and I'm excited that the students are going to be able to be here as well. I think that's going to really add to the program, so. Questions on Zama Park, and that money is budgeted?
We have some dollars that were budgeted in this year's budget, and then also working with Rex, we've been able to maneuver some of the dollars from last year's budget into this, so we're in good shape on the budget.
Well, and I think for so many people, they thought it was just going to be the old tire-roll project, property, but it's going to take us all the way down to Washington?
Yes.
Yes, Washington Street. Okay, then I know we have a couple of things under other?
Yes, we do. Mike, if you'll go ahead with CUD.
Certainly. As we just discussed in the previous meeting, we are recommending that the Mayor and Council sign the contract for the property swap that we have discussed with CUD, where we would be receiving approximately 1,848 lots, and they would be receiving 1,921. I apologize for not having the numbers right in front of me. And within this, they would also receive the Courier Place that they currently serve now and bill us for, which is not connected to our system. So I'll be working with Mr. Peach in his office and CUD's legal counsel to get the agreement drawn up and have that to you before the council meeting.
And just since it's not in this packet, once you all finish it, even if it's before the packet that goes out, could you get it?
We'll get it to you.
Perfect. Any questions under this item, under other? Other, other?
Yes, if Yes, if, pass the mic down to you, Mr. Craig.
One other quick thing, I think everybody's aware that we're going to be offering a new benefit to our employees during open enrollment, it's the Identity Theft Protection Plan for folks, and part of that requires the mayor to sign an agreement with Info Armor, which is an all-state company to proceed with that. And so, I've attached the contract. I believe it's still being reviewed by legal, but it should be wrapped up by the time council meets in December, so just wanted to bring that to you as well.
Great. Questions for Jeff on this?
No questions on that, but I would point out that it's, what, about 35 people are still not signed up for open enrollment.
We're down to 24.
We're down to 24, okay. We've got a new count, but make sure everyone who participates in the town insurance program is signed up promptly. We've got to get this in and get it to payroll. So, anyone that's an employee and/or an elected official that utilizes our insurance, please get signed up as soon as possible.
Perfect. Any questions about that? Okay, other, other, other?
I think that covers the other.
Perfect. Okay, then we will move on to reports. Glad to have you tonight.
Good evening, mayor. I just thank you for, Mr. Hercules, for this opportunity to serve the town as the engineer and to work with Tom and the rest of the public work staff. Have quite a project list, as we've gone over earlier. The main thing right now is just the Eden Springs Extension Project where that construction is, should start picking up now that we have the lane shift detail in place. So, should see a lot more activity out there. We just like residents to be aware of that and be careful through that construction zone.
Right. Questions for Charles? Tom?
Thank you, mayor and council. This is the time of year of Thanksgiving. I just want to send out a thank you to all the people who volunteered for this last year. We have several programs that Public Works Department offers. There's Adopt a Stream Program, Adopt a Roadway, as well as we have the, through T-Dot, the Adopt a Highway Program that anyone individually or as a group can take part of. This last year, we had 18 different events, either Adopt a Stream, Roadway, or Highway. 13 different groups participated, over 300 volunteers, and they picked up a little over 250 bags of trash all throughout the town. That helps clean up not just the right-ofways, the places that we see, but also the places that we don't see that often, creeks, streams throughout our community. Some of the odd items that we picked up, lots of car parts, tires, furniture, a hot tub, and televisions.
Mark, where'd you put your hot tub?
I've been looking for that. I guess it just floated away.
It has a tendency to do that, but also we finish all we finish all of our milling and resurfacing projects for the year. We're looking at building another list of roads for upcoming fiscal year. And also, for the master stormwater project we are going on, appraisals have been complete. We have given those appraisals to the negotiator, and they will be reaching out to citizens next week to start meeting with them and making offers to purchase easements and/or property for that project.
Great. Questions for Tom? Steve?
Good evening, mayor and council. Just a few numbers to go along with, as I've mentioned before, how busy we are in our department. Last month, we issued 38 new single-family home permits. That's kind of a vague number, but here's one that's very tangible. We also issued 47 certificate of occupancies for homes, which means 47 families moved to Smyrna last month, which, you know, that's kind of staggering. Another number I'll mention is regarding electric permits. If you remember a few years ago when we began the program, we were kind of unsure if the fees received would cover our cost, and to date, for this, for this year, we have received $171,000 in electric fees. So, it's been quite a, quite a good, positive program for us.
Great. Questions for Steve? Thanks.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Sure, a couple of things in HR. We're extremely busy right now with performance appraisals as they're all coming in. The deadline for that is the second week of December, so we've been auditing those, and they've been coming in very timely, so that's, that's been nice. Open enrollment, as Brian mentioned, we're in the middle of that. We're wrapping that up, and then the busy time of getting all the data, you know, analyzed takes place then. And then really, we're wrapping up our United Way campaign here in the next week or so. Looks like we're going to have a banner year again this year and outdo what we did last year, so we'll have some totals probably next time we get together.
Great. Questions for Jeff? On evaluations, are you pretty comfortable with how things? I know
Yes, yeah, we've got the directors, the folks that are working for the directors or supervisors have been through lots of training. They've, the system is working well. We feel really good about the quality of the evaluations that are coming in, so yeah, we feel really good about it.
Do you think employees are understanding our meaning behind doing what we're doing? That it's to improve the quality of work?
I hope so, and some of that depends on how the supervisor explains it to people.
Right.
But we do try to stress in training that, you know, this is the value that they bring to us, and then giving them the feedback to help them know where they're doing excellent, where they can improve, and so I hope they, they find it helpful.
Do you have a lot that are using the computer system to put notes in and things like that?
Yes, and that's, that's sort of a constant reminder for folks, for all of us, just to take time, carve out of the day to put those notes in there, because it does make the evaluation process at the end of the year so much easier, because it just brings all those notes in automatically, and it's easier to, as Dave in our office likes to say, be an editor of the notes you've taken during the year than trying to recreate every, recreate everything that's happened in the past year, so.
Good. Questions for Jeff? Mike?
Thank you, mayor and council. I'll cover some projects and just a couple of programs. Just want to say thanks for everyone that attended last night, the lighting ceremony, and all the departments and volunteers that helped. We just appreciate what you guys do, and really appreciate the people that started that many, many years ago. So, it was handed off to us, and we've just tried to build on what everybody else has done already. Also, thanks to Santa and Mrs. Claus for making, making a showing last night. We appreciate that. It did snow in Smyrna, although the weather people didn't believe us, but it did. Also
I tried to help H She out. I tried to let Santa know that he's not been that bad. I'm not sure it worked.
I don't think that was what you told him.
Well, maybe that's not what I told him.
But I think he saw right through you, by the way.
No, he told you, I'm always good.
It's just about to be December, so you've got a lot of time to make up on that. Cedarstone Park, I think y'all have been seeing some photos from Dempsey &amp; Dillon Associates with the drone photos out there, and the turf installation and the playground installation are ongoing, but it's really nice to see that going in, so we're excited about that. Nolan Drive, I get asked about daily about asphalt over there. They're working on that. Obviously, they want to get that project in binder before winter sets in, so I know they've got some curb work and some more stone to put down. The light pole bases have been poured, and they hope to start some sidewalks when the weather permits, so we're working hard to get that project covered up in asphalt before winter. Depot Canopy, the, actually, the stage area was poured today, and I hadn't driven by this afternoon. I'm just hoping it's under, or plastic is over that right now, and I'm sure it is. But I'd also noticed that Rhonda Allen, her team, and our staff decorated the tree down there, and Joe Walls always orders me a special order tree down there for that, for that project, so it's nice to purchase local. We're excited about everything that's happening in the Depot District. Also, I just want to say congratulations to some of the people that won the service awards, the lifetime service award. Went to Rusty Boguski, the park board voted on that, and excited for him. He's got 25-plus years with the soccer league and has been nominated about four times, so he's well-deserving. Young Leader Award went to Brianna Evans. She's a student over at Smyrna High School. And then the Parents of the Year was a couple, Brian and Melissa Reisner, and Coach of the Year was Eli Victory. And I know Eli, and I remember when he was a kid, so that's showing my age a little bit, but he's, he's heavily involved and does a great job.
There is no way our leagues and so many things around the town could take place without volunteers, and that night is really a special night to see how many people are behind our leagues, and so always enjoy that night. And it is nice to see some that were in our leagues that are now coming up
Oh, yeah.
and volunteering, so. If you have not seen the tree down on Front Street, it is super cool this year. It is a Tennessee tree, for sure, and Rhonda and her elves did a great job, so we really appreciate it. Questions for Mike? Kathy?
Yes, mayor, council. I really just need to say thank you to all of you because you make my job so much easier. So many opportunities to be proactive with messaging to the media because of the work that you all do. Last night was a great example, Mike, you and your team. Courtney Morgan did a phenomenal job of going on camera for us multiple times, so we have the Daily News Journal there, we had the Murphysboro Post there, but we also had Channel 2 there and Channel 4. Channel 2 did a live remote at 4, at 5, and again at 6, and a recap at 10, and then Channel 4 did a recap at 10 as well that featured Courtney, which was phenomenal. And the Daily News Journal has already posted that entire series of photos online. You know, Chief Culbertson at the end there has fed some great stories to me from the fire department. We had a story about two personnel that actually rescued a dog from a family's home. The family was able to make it out okay, but the dog was still trapped, and so they used some equipment on apparatus to resuscitate that dog, and I still find that story on various sites, so that was phenomenal. Mayor, you will be featured in VIP Magazine in December, so I encourage you all to, to pick up a copy of VIP. It will be a great article, and I'm glad to have the opportunity to interview you and feature the work that you do on behalf of the town. Worked with Jeff a lot on social media platforms. We have 19 platforms that the Town of Smyrna has responsibility and oversight over, so we've kind of captured all of those and are doing what we're supposed to do and appreciate the work and the partnership on the revision of that policy. Continuing to build and steward relationships with my colleagues in this role across the county, Ann Smith in particular, I did not know her prior to. She's my role in Laverne, and we've already, that work has already manifested itself in a scenario that we handled together, so that was wonderful. Brian, I will not steal your thunder, but I have been working with Stewart's Creek High School and Chris Bissinger and their team on, on work that they're going to do for us in a really unique partnership that was Brian's vision, and I have the privilege of helping execute around workforce development, what that can mean in real-world opportunities, and then working with James Evans and Beth Duffield with the chamber in the school system to promote that work from a public relations perspective. So, lots going on, and just grateful, grateful to all of you.
Well, Kathy, you have hit the ground running. You were at every event, and I think Brian's vision for your position and what we as a council were hoping to happen, we have great things going on in our town, and we just didn't have enough time or personnel to get it all out, and so I think we're starting to see that come to fruition. And I have had multiple people say to me that live outside of Smyrna, "I didn't know you all had that going on. I didn't know you all had that going on." So, it's nice that people can learn about some of the great things we have going on. Questions or comments for Kathy? Kevin?
Mr. Mayor and council, excuse me, we do have a planning commission next week with a few items. Not as, as busy of an agenda, but we still have several things going on and a couple of requests that could be coming to you all for annexation. One thing I do want to touch on, and we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with our joint council and planning, as well as members of our steering committee regarding our comprehensive plan, and we are nearing the end of the road on that one, and we are planning a public meeting in January. We have tentatively scheduled that. I don't want to publish that just quite yet, because we need to make sure we get it firmed up with the event center and everything, but looking, a public meeting in January, so we would like to invite everyone to be able, who could, and come out to that once we get that word out, so.
Great. Questions for Kevin? Hope you get to feeling better.
Thank you.
Rex?
October local sales tax collected $1,258,630. That gives us a year-to-date budget surplus of $79,604. October state shared tax collected $535,795. That gives us a year-to-date budget surplus of $46,762. So, you can see we're right on target for our budget with these two accounts, and we anticipate the audit being published sometime in the next week or so.
H She, this is your spot.
So much of our revenue comes from the local spending, and I was actually saving this up for, for when it came back around to me, but this is as good a time as any, that Mr. Gaither and our town really appreciate the fact that when you shop local, the money is returned to our community. So much of our overall budget, what percent is it, Rex, comes from local sales tax?
It's the largest part. Kind of putting me on the spot here. I know local sales tax and property tax are our two biggest ones, and both those together are around 20, somewhere between 25 and 30% of the whole budget for the general fund.
So, shop local in Smyrna, but to a greater degree, shop your local independent businesses, because more of that money is actually even returned to the community also. So, with the holiday purchasing coming up, this is the time to really take a little bit more effort and shop local.
Well, and I am guilty of this, and I really try to be careful of it. You know, it's so easy maybe to shop where your business is if it's not in Smyrna, and, you know, just come on home to do your shopping, and, but I agree, also those local small businesses.
Well, you know, the reason I say take a little more effort, because it's so easy to get on your computer, and, you know, that's the least amount that is returned to our community is when you buy something online. I'm not calling any names or anything like that, but, you know, just if we have to buy it across the street, get in your car and go there and get it, it's better for our community. The local businesses are the ones who are returning money to our community in so many different ways, not just the employees and such as that, that, that spend money locally also, but, you know, when we look at who supports our local schools, the athletic programs, the, the volunteer organizations across our community, you know, these are the people that they go to. They, they get touched first.
And we did a proclamation the last meeting for Small Business Saturday, which will be coming up, so we encouraged you, encourage you to shop at your small businesses, and especially those small businesses here in Smyrna. Anything else, H She?
You want me to go ahead and do my part?
No, not yet.
Okay, all right.
Rex, anything else?
No, ma'am.
Thanks. Mike?
Yes, ma'am. Things are continuing well at the wastewater plant expansion. We ran into a little issue with rock at one of the basins that was not picked up on the geological survey, but they worked well through that with, with minimal effort, so that was good to see that, that they're willing to work through issues well. The other thing, Brian and Kevin and I and some others did meet with Linwood. They are, they are back at the table, so we'll, we'll see how that goes. They, they seem excited to get moving, as, as do we, so they have finally come back and said the market is now right for them to look at moving forward, so we'll, we'll see how that goes from this point.
And Brian and I have had some discussion about that meeting and the importance of making sure our legislators understand how important that Amal Road is, and he's already working that angle and has it on our legislative agenda that we're going to be in December, December 4th, couldn't remember the date. So, but excited about these projects.
Yes, ma'am.
See, you're supporting Auburn tonight?
I'm a Tennessee fan and anybody that plays Alabama.
Got it. I thought that was Auburn. Okay. Chief?
Hi, mayor, council. We, we had an excellent food drive this year, best, best year we've ever had, and I'd like to thank everybody that donated. I have to thank the, the principals, the staff, and the children of Smyrna Elementary, Cedar Grove Elementary, and Stewart's Pearl Elementary. They, they were so helpful, but our total this year was 40,549 items we, we delivered over to the food bank.
That is unbelievable.
That puts us close to about 370,000 items we have delivered in the past 18 years to the food bank. That puts us close to about 370,000 items we have delivered in the past 18 years at the food bank.
That is phenomenal, and I can't thank the Fire Department enough for everything you do, but it is definitely neighbor helping neighbor. And I saw the pictures that you posted. I can't remember which school it was, but those kids looked so excited to be there with those cans of food. So, so thanks for everything that you all have done. That is an amazing number. It's up, what, about 10,500 from last year?
Yes, ma'am.
Wow, that's great.
Still have the parade to go.
That's right, still have the parade to go. And Chris Warwick at Walmart is always great about letting you all come out. And I saw he was dressed for the festivities this year.
He was, he was, and we spent Saturday there with him. And we do appreciate him and the associates letting us come out. We try to clean the shelves.
Good. Questions for Chief? Thanks, Chief. Todd, are you doing Police Department tonight?
I can't.
Okay.
One of our big projects, obviously, is our hiring process. We have our applicants in. We're going through the list of applicants now. We have a new process where we're communicating a lot more with the applicants. Getting that scheduled, getting the agility test planned. We also have an application period closed for telecommunicator. We have three open positions on that as well. We're working through those dispatchers as well. And staying busy, lock your cars. It's come shopping season. We're adding some extra patrols during the prime shopping times. Make sure you lock your cars, hide your packages, keep your valuables out of sight.
It's amazing to me, the people that don't lock their doors with their cars sitting in their driveway. I mean, you know, we see those ring doorbell things and people are just going through checking to see if doors are unlocked, so.
Need to remind everybody about our parking ordinance too, don't we? Town manager, you want to tell everybody what time they can and can't do it?
Well, yes, thank you. We do have a parking ordinance and we've had some issues from time to time. And between the hours of 1:00 a.m. and 5:00 a.m., it's in our ordinance. We're not allowed, not supposed to be parking on the street. We have that ordinance in place so that we don't have to run through neighborhoods and knock on doors at late hours if we have an emergency, not only wasting the time, but wasting the effort of our folks that are trying to respond to emergencies. We have, in the past, ticketed in those incidents, and we will continue to do so if, if we have a problem. So we don't necessarily go out looking for the issue, but typically if we come through a neighborhood and we have an emergency, then it's going to be resolved. I will tell you though that we do respond to complaints. So if your neighbor has called in and we're called to the site, then it is a possibility that you will be ticketed for parking on the streets between 1:00 a.m. and 5:00 a.m. We ask that you always take into consideration when you're parking on the streets. If you're parking two cars, one on each side of the street next to each other, that again condenses the size of the street. Keep that in consideration. If you are parking on the streets during the day, try to be considerate that, you know, we do need to get not only our emergency equipments during the day, the apparatus for the Fire Department or an ambulance. We may actually have school buses that need to get through those areas. So keep that in consideration as you look at the opportunities to park on the street. Understand between 1:00 a.m. and 5:00 a.m. it is illegal to park on the streets.
It's important to note that this is not a new ordinance.
No, this ordinance has been in place for a long time.
Long time.
Long time.
Ms. Diane?
As of this afternoon, we already issued 40 new business licenses. So sometimes we have them waiting in line.
Great. Have you had to track any down lately?
Uh, not lately. We've been talking about our next trip.
Your next trip.
We might give them a little reprieve during the holidays.
I think they're looking to earn detective badges.
I think they need lights on their car.
Questions for Ms. Diane? Brian?
I do have a couple of things, Mayor and Council, I'd like to share with you. But I have to tell you, I was out at Walmart with the Fire Department on the day, I think it was the 16th, during the collection, and just watching the people come out literally from, everything from a bag with two or three cans in it to people pushing a full buggy of food to the food bank. I was talking to one of the firefighters and talking about the work and all this kind of stuff, and talking to them about the schools and how the schools had participated this year. I have to share this story just very quickly. They said, "Yes, sometimes the kids get a little over-aggressive and enthusiastic about being part of this to the extent that a couple of times they've had to come back and find Thanksgiving dinner for the family that was brought to school by the children to donate." I just thought that was the cutest thing that, man, they're into it. Let's take everything we got. So we do appreciate them. I do want to recognize also that the town offices will be closed this Thursday and Friday in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. So November 28th and 29th, we will be closed for Thanksgiving. I'm going to pass this forward. Kathy said she wasn't going to steal my thunder, and Mayor, I'm not going to steal all of your thunder about the parade and some things. But we do have a couple of updates that I'd just like to share in a mode of Thanksgiving saying thank you. If we could pull up on the screen the families and different businesses. I think we've actually had to add a second page to this now because of so many people supporting the food drive. And we're not going to talk about that number till the end of the food drive. But it's, it's been a very good year and very appreciative of everyone that's participated. As I talk about the Christmas parade, one thing I do want to share that Kathy and I have been working with Stewart's Creek and Chris Bissinger, I think we've got about 35 students. We are actually going to live televise our parade this year, but in a different mode. We have hired Stewart's Creek Television. They, the children are, the students, I shouldn't call them children. The students are actually directing and producing the full gamut of the parade this year. They, they are so excited. They have built their, their screens that the parade will be viewed through. It'll be live viewed. We will have on our website, the day of the parade, if you go to the town website or if you go to Stewart's Creek website, you'll be able to click onto a link and you'll be able to live view the parade and see the children announcing the parade as it comes through and all those kind of things. So Mayor, you'll be riding with us this year slinging candy. We're looking forward to it. And no, golf carts are not bumper cars, okay, Mayor?
Why do I get blamed for everything?
Just want to point that out. But this is exciting. Again, the, the website link will be on our website as well as Stewart's Creek High School. Also, they have decided that they are going to go back and edit the full video. And they will have it to us by Wednesday after the parade. And we will work with Channel Three to make sure that we program that into our system through the Christmas holidays so people can go back if they're shut in or not able to get out, you'll be able to see the parade. So we're very excited. These, these young folks are just so, I mean, this is a big deal for them.
Well, I think it's a great opportunity. Kathy, you were talking about it, that, you know, the workforce development and stuff. We're looking at ways to train students in high school and middle school. And this is a perfect opportunity for that. So I am so excited and I'm glad that the students are excited as well. Is there a way on the day of the parade, because we have been doing it live on TV, is there a way to have something at the bottom that could send them to that link?
That's what we're saying. On our, our webpage, if you go to the town webpage, there will be a click on link. There'll also be one with Stewart's Creek that you can go live, and it'll be YouTube and Facebook Live.
But on our Channel Three, is there a way to have something at the bottom? So if they go to Channel Three during the day of the parade, they could at least be directed to go to the town website or something like that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, we can put a graphic on Channel Three to direct them.
Yeah, to them.
And the link is already on our website. It's already on the homepage of our website.
Because I know there's so many family members and especially grandparents and things that want to see kids that are in the parade that may not be able to make it to the parade.
Absolutely. So that'll all be done. And again, just keep in mind, even like the link was designed by the students.
Yes.
They're doing 100% of this production, and it's going to be really cool.
Yep.
Just a couple of other things. You may have seen something on Facebook about this last week. Just a really, really cool event for the town of Smyrna. We got a call at the last minute to go down to the depot. Susan Gully with Carpe Artista had made a connection with a gentleman from Coward, Tennessee through the train depots and the locomotive museums and all those kind of things. But we're returning to the town of Smyrna, we believe, is the original sign that hung on our depot. It was covered and was hanging on the Coward County Depot. They're repainting that depot and they took that off to do some work on it. And when they removed that plate, they found the original Smyrna lettering. And they felt like it needed to come home. And as a curator of the museum, the gentleman brought it down and dropped it back off. We were able to go down and accept that on behalf of the town. It's, it's at the depot right now. We'll be working with Building and Grounds to do something to preserve it, but it'll probably hang inside the depot going forward just because it is so old.
Do we have any idea how it got there?
Not sure. They said that they use those as... They use the, the actual signs as models. And they think somehow that one got moved up and was, was used. So it's just, just an interesting story, and we appreciate Susan. Ron Alley was there with us as we accepted it and give them kudos for making those connections. Sometimes the world seems a little smaller when we, we all connect, so. That same day, the mayor and I had an opportunity to speak to leadership, Middle Tennessee, at the TCAT, and compliment the mayor. She did a great job. We, we discussed the Sister City program and also the redevelopment of our downtown area because that's something relevant to most of the leaders in our communities around us. I know we're entering into the holiday season and it's been spoken about already, but I just wanted to say to Mike Moss and the Parks and Rec Department, SOAC, the Police and Fire Department Chief, and Chief Kevin with the Police Departments, the Streets Department, Tom, and the Building and Grounds Department, all the work that was done for last night's event, it was so much fun. You know, I know the mayor used the term last night that it kind of helps get us into the season, seeing the children respond to Santa Claus, to all the singing and all the fun things that happened. But especially the Building and Grounds, because it was not just at SOAC last night. They have been up for the last month putting ornaments and everything around the town, all the decorations. As I left last night riding through town, it was really fun to see all the lights on. So thank you all so much for just, again, just being great ambassadors for the town. And the last thing I have is we are entering this week into the Thanksgiving season, which begins the holiday season. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, you know, we just talked about the town offices being closed. But unfortunately, we don't get to close all the offices. We still have work that has to be done. That's part of the nature of who we are. So I just want to give a shout out to the water treatment plant, the wastewater treatment plant, our police and fire departments as we go through this holiday season. Unfortunately, some of those folks are not going to be able to be at home with their families because they're here taking care of us. And it's a passion that resonates through our employee base. And it makes me think, just, just very quickly, I just want to say how thankful I am for the opportunity to work with this awesome team. It's, it's been an incredible experience over the last year and a half almost to be part of this. And we do not take it for granted. My wife and I would just like to say thank you for the town, for putting your faith in us to do this job. Thank you for the team that I work with on a daily basis, for buying into my vision and being part of what we're doing going forward, try to make Smyrna and our community a better place. I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving, and when we sit down and think about it, we've got a lot to be thankful for. So thank you.
Great. Questions for Brian? Jeffrey?
I did want to mention that Brian and I went to the District Six Tennessee Municipal League meeting over in Brentwood. And once, they're going to kind of fine tune it, but I thought it was an excellent presentation regarding sales tax, a historical and mathematical presentation about going into the new legislative session of talking about how the sales tax issues could change, especially with online sales, and how that may affect us. And it's, they've put together a good plan to show where, where things were kind of skewed with, between the cities and the counties. I just really enjoyed that. I don't know if Brian did, but I enjoyed that part of it. He probably already knew the information. Also, I enjoyed last night, looking forward to Sunday. And although I don't have a smaller cart for Jax to ride in, I was a little upset about that, but...
Can you get a wagon just to pull him in?
I could, I could. I have to think about that. He would pull me. He actually would probably.
There's a basket in the back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think he fit the basket. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Did you realize that it's the 398th year of, for Thanksgiving, since the first Thanksgiving?
Wow.
So we're very lucky to, to live...
That sounded illegal to me. I don't know.
That's what we do. 1621. Anyway, thank you for employing me, and I enjoyed working here, so I appreciate it.
Great. Thanks, Jeff. Raquel?
To echo what's been said about the lighting ceremony, it was a great event. It was really nice to see all of the kids that were out, that were singing. Tried to get Mark to...
Play the drums.
...shine in, but he said he didn't have a full kit.
Jerry would have sang, I would have played the drums. Jerry would have sang. Jerry kept telling me, "No way, no way."
Next year?
Next year.
Next year.
Next year. But that was a great event, and there were a lot of children. And thanks to Smyrna High School, was it their choral or was it...
The jazz band.
The jazz band. Oh, sorry. The choral. But that, that was a very good event. Also wanted to mention that the Smyrna Library celebrated its 20th anniversary. Couple of, was it about two weeks ago? So congratulations to them on that. Also to the Fire Department, congratulations on such a wonderful, outstanding total. Very excited to hear about that. Looking forward to seeing what we have done as well, since we have this little bet still going on.
He didn't want to talk about totals because he knows he's going down.
Raquel's been on fire.
She has been on fire.
She's been pulling it in.
Yeah, Raquel's, she's the team to beat, but I'll be close second.
I think you're right.
I don't like to brag. I just...
She just likes to start it. She likes to start it.
If we, if we take the totals with no cheating, I guarantee you I'll be in second place.
Second place.
How's nobody say cheating?
Uh, reputation.
I don't know. Also want to wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving this Thursday. And I want to take a moment just to mention something else that we have going on because we won't have, have another meeting prior to this happening. But our office actually collects toys and donations during the holiday season for CASA. CASA is a program that works with children that are in foster care. And so because they are away from their families during the holidays, we support this organization and collect toys so that they can be given out to the children that are in foster care. So my office will be doing that, and we will be collecting up until December the 12th, which is when we will have our CASA benefit party. So if anyone has any extra toys or would like to donate, we would really love to have you participate in that. And I think that is it for me.
Great. H.G.?
Once again, congratulations to Mr. Spearman and Mr. Gaither there. It's going to be good to have you aboard. Good to have you in the house, Todd. Congratulations to Rusty Boguski, who won the Victory Lifetime Achievement Award. I've known Rusty for a very long time, and I, I know how hard he works for the league on Saturdays. He's generally the first one out there and the last one to leave. And his efforts are appreciated over the years, and I'm glad that he's being recognized for that. You know, one other point about going back to Rex and the money coming in and everything. People seem to think that their property tax is what drives our, our budget and everything. And it's not. The property tax is far overshadowed by the sales tax. So putting in one more plug for the shop local. Also want to look forward to seeing everybody at the parade on Sunday and then hope that everybody has a wonderful and happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Rex, Todd, I really look forward to working with you in the coming year. I'm excited about the team and, and what we're doing as a town and the leadership that, that's here. Gosh, you know, there's no way that you can go to the tree lighting ceremony and not walk away in the, in the spirit of the season with all the little kids there and the singing. H.G. had talked about doing an interpretive dance to Jingle Bells. It didn't, I think his costume didn't get there.
The song got away from behind every attention.
He needed a good drummer behind him.
Yeah, that's true.
Next year.
Next year. But I did want to... I'm sorry, I just got a bit... Did want to wish everyone... A happy Thanksgiving.
A happy Thanksgiving. And I'm going to turn it over to Jerry.
I also would like to congratulate Rex and Todd. I know you guys will do a great job, and so, and compliment Brian very well, so congratulations. The Chief, thank you guys as well. That's a phenomenal number, and you guys work so hard at that. I just appreciate it, and thank you for what you do. Appreciate it. Yesterday was my daughter-in-law's birthday, so the lady had a happy birthday. She was there last night. They had a great time, and the girls got their pictures made with Santa, so they had a great time last night, as well as I did. That was, that is so much fun going to that. I really have enjoyed that. And then, just last, I just want to say happy Thanksgiving. And Brian, like you, I am truly blessed to work with you guys, you guys, the citizens here of Smyrna as well. It's just been, you know, I've been doing it with you guys now for a year, and it's just been so much fun, and I've had just so blessed, so just want to say that, Mayor. Thank you.
Todd and Rex, once again, congratulations. Looking forward to working with you guys, and I know you'll help us do some good things for the town. And like I said, I've known you both personally for a long, long time, so good character, good men, and I know you'll do a good job for us, so we appreciate that. As I looked around the table, we've got Charles and Kathy, and now Rex, and Todd, and new roles. I mean, that's a lot of, a lot of kind of new faces. We're growing our staff. The town's getting bigger. And with that, I know, you know, Jeff, your job really kind of gets, you know, you're looking at valuations this time of year, you're doing insurance this time of year, you're having to make sure these guys don't have backgrounds that are terrible, right, when you hire them. So, a lot of work back there with the HR staff and team. I just want to tell you, thank you. I appreciate you guys and what you do back there. We saw the list up there a while ago of all the canned goods donors so far. Sean and Susan Collins, they're in the audience. They were some of the first and the quickest ones to jump in. Thank you guys for doing that. We're getting a lot of people really buying into the idea, and I'm excited, Mayor, about where this total's going to wind up. Chief, your guys did an awesome job. I mean, over forty thousand pieces of food. That's amazing. And if you walk back through those double doors and look at Tiffany's area, and then look at the Mayor's office, it's canned goods stacked high in both of those rooms, and we've still got more to get. So, it's pretty exciting. And to me, that's Thanksgiving. To me, what I'm seeing is all of us, all of you, the community have bought in, and this is going to make somebody's year better. Some people need a hand up every now and then, you know, and so, I'm glad we're able to stock the shelves of the Nourish Food Bank and help people out. Thanksgiving as well as working with all of you guys and working with this team up here, and I'm blessed. I'm thankful for it. I'm glad that the citizens allow me to do it. And so, I just want to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Enjoy your families, enjoy the downtime, and enjoy the blessings. I do want to mention Mark Parker lost his mother-in-law, I think, this past week. So, condolences to Mark's family and his wife and their loss. And I think that's all I had, Mayor. So, one other thing, thank you guys earlier, the four o'clock meeting that we had today on the roads and drainage and engineering updates that we get from you guys are invaluable. I love doing it, and I appreciate you guys doing it, so thank you for your time in preparing that. Kevin, Charles, Mike, who else was in there? Tom, Rex and Todd sat in, so thank you guys for the update. Helps us see what's going on in town. We know there's money being spent, roads being widened, and things are coming, so be patient with us, and that's all I have.
Great. I have a few items. Don't forget, this Sunday is our forty-fifth Annual Smyrna Christmas Parade. It will take place at two o'clock on Lowry Street. This year's theme is A Tennessee Christmas. The one thing I just want to remind you, we've talked about the canned goods that have been coming in from businesses and organizations and individuals. This is also a time that the spectators can participate. The utilities and Streets Department have put a float together, and they will, did we get the shopping carts to go beside there?
Yes.
So, we will have shopping carts that will go beside the float that will be collecting the canned good items from the spectators. And can we get something out on social media tomorrow that really pushes the participants, the spectators that will be coming to bring those canned good items and to look for the shopping carts and the floats that will be coming down the way? Thanks to Jill Strange for all she has done for, to work on this parade. I cannot tell you the number of hours that she puts in to, for all of us to have such a great event. And she is the head elf in that regard, and then all of the employees that make a great day. So, don't forget the Christmas Parade this Sunday at two o'clock. Christmas Downtown, a Front Street Christmas will be Saturday, December the seventh. You can bring the family downtown for holiday fun, for hot chocolate, five-dollar carriage rides, a free picture with Santa courtesy of the Smyrna Fire Department, and free smores will be available during the event. It will be from five to seven at 100 Front Street, and everyone is invited to attend. Our 2020 Top Gun Run, the date for the run has been scheduled. It is Friday, May 29th at 8:00 p.m. Have we got a link up yet for sites to register? Do we know?
I believe it is up.
We've, I know that the site is up, but I'm just not sure if we've got it connected to our website yet, but it will be coming, I will tell you. We have added a hundred and fifty more slots this year, and it will fill up fast again. So, I think we've already had some people that have already signed up, so we encourage you to get signed up for the Top Gun Night Run. Mike, thanks for the Utilities Thanksgiving Lunch. It was great and always great fellowship. Smyrna High School, Hundred Year. We had that event since the last time that we were here, and I want to say.
Steve missed that, too.
Steve missed that, too. He did. He was, I think he was out of town. No, he was not back from a project. Not back from a project. That's right.
He wasn't nearby.
That's right. But thanks to Dr. Sutherland for putting that on. It was a great event. I want to thank Brian for inviting General Huber from MTSU to come speak to our veterans. I think that our employees that are veterans, I think, from what I heard, he had quite a bit of great information for them, and we really appreciate that.
I saw General Huber Sunday, and he said he had had several of our people reach out and make appointments. So, we're going to look at maybe late January, early February, doing another meeting. I think we're going to do this one at five o'clock so that not only the employees, but maybe some of their spouses can come in, so.
Great. He is such a wonderful asset, and I think a lot of people don't realize that the Charlie and Hazel Daniels Veteran Center at MTSU is not just for MTSU students. It's for any veteran, and they are more than willing to help. So, General Huber is a part of that organization and was very gracious to come down and speak to our veterans. We talked about the Christmas Parade. If there's anybody out there that would still like to contribute food items and are not going to be at the parade, we are happy to take those, and you can put them towards Team Reed. Okay. The last thing I want to talk about before talking about Thanksgiving is Topray made an announcement, and it is their fourth, fourth expansion. Fifty-one employees, sixty million dollars, and one of the things that they talked about in their release was the visit that we made to Japan and meeting with their organization. I don't think you ever can, can't put a value on relationship building. You never know what is going to come out of having discussions. We got a sign back from Cowan, Tennessee, that, because Susan had a discussion with somebody, we have fifty-one new jobs and sixty million dollars pumped into our economy because of a visit that we made to Japan. So, never discredit relationship building. I think that is so important. I just want to say happy Thanksgiving to each one of you here in this room, to our employees, and to the citizens of the town of Smyrna. There is not a day that goes by that I am not thankful that my parents chose the town of Smyrna as home. There is no place I would rather lay my head every night. If I had a choice to live anywhere in this world, it is always the town of Smyrna, and it's because of the community that we have created here. And I think the food drive that the Fire Department has done and the food drive that we are currently doing is a testament to community and about neighbor helping neighbor, and I just appreciate where I live and my friends and family. So, I will be especially thankful on Thursday, and I hope you all are as well. Anything else? Nothing else, then we are adjourned.